Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Vineland Board of Education's special meeting. Mrs. Haley, can I have your call, please?
Mr. Fioki.
Here.
Mr. Holmes.
Here.
Mr. Jennings. Mr. Medio.
Here.
Mr. Sabrana.
Present.
Ms. Spinelli.
Here.
Mr. Ulrich.
Present.
Ms. Acosta.
Here.
Mr. Boardley.
Here. In compliance with the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law, commonly referred to as the Sunshine Law, the Vineland Board of Education has called notice and posting of this meeting to be sent to the following, announcing time and place thereof, agenda, etc. The Daily Journal, SNJ Today, The Press of Atlantic City, Nuestro Comandad, Vista Bueno, The Clerk for the City of Vineland, and the Administrative Office Public Bulletin Board. Everyone, please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Tonight's meeting is a public hearing regarding the naming of Lincoln Avenue Middle School. I will begin to detail the procedures. I will open the public comment on nominations for the naming of Lincoln Avenue Middle School in honor of a person meeting the criteria of policy 7250. Speakers will be requested to sign the yellow sheets so Mrs. Haley can provide, can be provided with the correct spelling of the name of each speaker. Those speakers will be called up in alphabetical order. In the event someone arrived late or for some reason didn't fill out a yellow sheet, he or she will be permitted to speak after the alphabetical list is completed. Speakers will have three minutes to make his or her presentation, including how the nominee meets the criteria under policy 7250. I will signal, or excuse me, Ms. Messori will signal when one minute remains so that the speaker can wrap up his or her comments. Each speaker may only take, make one three-minute presentation. I will request the audience to avoid repetitive comments and ask subsequent speakers only to address new points to be made. Speakers may only address nominations submitted prior to the published deadline and whose names were published in the public notice on, of this October 17, 2018 meeting. After the public comment is closed, each board member will be given a ballot with his or her name on it. The ballot will list the candidates in alphabetical order. Each board member will be asked to select three finalists. After the three finalists are announced, the board members will have an opportunity to make nominations. After the hearing is closed, I will request Mr. DeSanto to summarize the selection procedure. We'll carry on with the motions and resolutions, and we will adjourn from there. Mr. DeSanto, anything to add?
The mic's not on.
The mic's not on, bud. Yes, after the hearing is closed, I will then review the selection process.
Thank you. We will now begin with a public hearing.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here to read a letter that my husband, Joe Barufi, had written for the Board of Education to consider the name of Salvatore Schalante. And this is how it goes. To the members of the Vineland Board of Education, I would like you to consider the naming of Vineland's newest middle school in honor of Salvatore Schalante. I knew Mr. Schalante for most of my life and found him to be a person committed to family, faith, and education. Mr. Schalante was a devoted son, husband, and father. He began working at an early age to help support his family, was drafted in the Army, and then honorably discharged after his father was killed, and later he put himself through college. Mr. Schalante attended Saint Michael's Church in Minnetola. I would often see him on Sundays with his family in church. He and I served on the parish council together. He played a vital role in organizing and planning many church events that supported both youth and adult. Mr. Schalante was also a role model educator. He was a science teacher at the middle school level and a football coach at both middle and high school levels. Mr. Schalante had a special passion for life. It was infectious, getting the most out of his students and athletes. His teaching style was progressive, as was his coaching style. Mr. Schalante's last conscious moments were spent during a football practice at Vineland High School in 1989, where he suffered a heart attack that proved fatal within the week. A great soulist to the family, that he died doing just what he loved. However, naming this school in his honor in memory of his devotion to the education of Vineland's students and his commitment to Vineland's student athletes would bring a distinction and a tribute that would fulfill a legacy cut short in his prime. I understand you have a huge responsibility in the screening process. It is difficult. It's a difficult commission. Within, with that being said, I ask your consideration in naming the new middle school in honor of Salvatore Schalante. Mr. Schalante was a family-oriented person with a strong devotion to his faith. His commitment to education in Vineland, most notably at the middle school level, was more than just a career choice. It was a vocation he lived. The student and athletes...
Ms. Barufi, I'm sorry to cut you off. We're at the time limit.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. General statement, first of all, I think Vineland ought to be extremely proud to be considering such a worthy list of candidates. But I come to speak because of the personal effect that Salvatore Schalante, known to me only as Mr. Schalante, had on my life. And I found, as I read and reread my letter, that the comments I made, I had thought through very much, so I would like, might be repetitive to the board, but I'd like to read the letter that I wrote on his behalf. In 1963 to 64, I was a student of South Schalantes in the eighth grade at Clary Junior High School and on the Clary football team, where Mr. Schalante was an assistant coach. Mr. Schalante was a powerful influence in my life in a very subtle yet meaningful way. He was a simple man, straightforward, almost paradoxical in being forceful yet gentle. He was very open about his humble upbringing, even telling stories of his Friday night mini-pies with his family and awaiting the yearly Sears catalog so the family could have toilet paper for the year. I believe that humble beginning allowed him to identify with a wide range of economic strata, never condescending to even the lowest of those. His unspoken message was that no matter your situation, you could make it, and that he would do what he could do for you in order for you to accomplish it if you were willing to apply yourself to the pursuit. I respected him because he was respect-worthy. He appreciated and rewarded effort, but at the same time would discipline, a lack of it lovingly, to bring the recipient to a better place. He had a jolly laugh, never directed at anyone, rather with them. He always wore a plain white shirt with his sleeves rolled up, no matter what the outside temperature, and his tie, all of 12 inches long, tied in a large knot. Never flashy, yet always noticeable because he noticed. His life gave me a pattern, one of simplicity, integrity, application, and accomplishment, while simultaneously delivering the material to and for others. Naming a school for him would bring an image of it, of what he was and what he represented. He was, for the students, a school after his name, would be and should be directed the same. He is truly someone who affected my life and that I would say I regularly miss. Thank you.
Good evening. It is an honor to be here tonight. Thank you for having this hearing. Thank you for holding it in a place where, to be able to give everybody an opportunity to come speak and share their thoughts. You are all elected officials. You all understand the oath that you took. You all understand what it means to be sitting up here. It is an honor for all of you to be here. When you are elected to office, you stand up, you take an oath, and you swear to defend the Constitution and represent your constituents. Sergeant Dominic Pillar was not only a hero, but he's a local. He's right here, he's from right here in Vineland. He is somebody who didn't, he wasn't a millionaire, he wasn't a businessman, he wasn't an elected official. He was an average Joe who signed on the dotted line, joined our military, and as an Army sergeant myself, to me, he's a very respectable man, not only for what he has done, but before his passing, for his accomplishments while in the military. He is somebody that our youth here in Vineland would have been looking up to and should have been following in his footsteps. His actions in Mogadishu are absolutely honorable, and he not only sacrificed his life for this country, but for peace in general in the world. For many of you, I don't know if all of you are familiar with what happened in Mogadishu and why we were there. We are actually still over in that area today fighting, and what happens is you have pockets of really bad people that come into power and they take over and they start terrorizing. So we send over our soldiers to go in and make sure that we eradicate them and instill peace. Sergeant Dominic Pillar was one of those peacemakers. He is somebody that we should all be looking up to as Americans, and I'm proud that he came from this district in New Jersey. I'm proud that he is from Vineland, and I hope all of you listen to everybody here tonight and hear what they have to say. It's one thing to hear, but to actually listen, I hope you listen and make the right choice in deciding on the school, the name of the school. Thank you all.
Hi, good evening. I'll be reading a nomination on behalf of Vera Sharp for Salvatore Schalante, sorry. It is with the utmost confidence and pleasure that I recommend the name Salvatore Schalante Middle School for the newly-built middle school on Lincoln Avenue, Vineland, New Jersey. Through speaking with family members and friends of Mr. Schalante, I learned that his passion for education came at an early age. His dedication to educating children was unbounded. While in military training, Mr. Schalante was summoned home to take over the role of head of household due to the death of his father. He willingly assumed the position and was, and was, and remained someone who took his responsibilities very seriously. Until his death, he remained a devoted family man and conscientious citizen, assisting and influencing others in positive and helpful ways. As a seventh grader, I had the pleasure of having Mr. Schalante for a science teacher. Every day, I looked forward to being greeted at my classroom door by this fine gentleman. He was firm, yet loving, to his students and made everyone feel special in one way or another. Mr. Schalante possessed the ability to impart his knowledge of science easily to his students. He would also often end his classes with a valuable life lesson quote. For many of us, it sparked a desire to incorporate these meaningful perceptions into our own personal lives. Later on, while teaching at Veterans Memorial School, Mr. Schalante became a football coach at Vineland High School. He gained further respect as a leader during that time. Sadly, at the age of 58, he suffered a massive heart attack during football practice. Mr. Schalante passed away a week later. This was written by Vera Sharp, former educator and SAC for the Vineland Public Schools. I also have another short nomination on behalf of Michael A. Palau. I would like to nominate Salvatore C. Schalante as one of the names to be considered for the new school. Almost 30 years ago, I graduated from Vineland Senior High School, class of '79. I had the good fortune to be on the varsity football team and the privilege to have Coach Schalante as an assistant coach for the offensive line. I remember several games into the season, the offensive line was having problems with the timing of the snap count, and while reviewing films from the games, Coach Schalante helped us discover the problem and come up with a solution, which we used for the remainder of the season. He never asked for credit or thanks, that was the type of man he was. I lettered in three sports and have had many coaches and teachers while in high school. Coach Schalante generally cared about what he taught and cared about the people he taught. He had a way about him and a personality that I mean, easy to learn from him. Coach Schalante was a dedicated coach and teacher on and off the field. I truly feel it would be a great honor to his name, his family, and friends for any facility to bear his name. Thank you.
What does George Washington, Susan B. Anthony, Martin Luther King, and Harry Mizaki all have in common? I've never personally met them, but they have made a lasting impression and positive impact on others. My grandfather, Harry, was not born into a wealthy or famous family, but he did make a difference for the people in the city of Vineland. My mom would tell me stories about his bravery, loving demeanor, and a sense of humor. Being able to interact with others through selflessness and love is a very admirable trait. In school, I had to complete a family tree. This was a wonderful opportunity for me to connect with my great aunts and uncles. I was proud hearing the stories and memories they shared. Looking through the old memorabilia brought a smile to my face along with some tears. My grandfather did not want to travel too far from Vineland because he wanted to stay close in case of a fire. Hearing this story from my great uncle Joe gives me a sense of admiration. I am proud to say my grandfather was a volunteer firefighter, dedicated his life to making sure others were safe. To me, this is the most selfless thing a person can do. I respect and look up to firefighters because they protect us from harm. As a student, I received an assignment to write an essay on my hero. There was no hesitation. I wrote about my grandfather and how he honorably served in the Korean War and in Vineland through his volunteer work as a firefighter and participation in the community service. He truly is my hero. He died at the age of 36, which reminds me, life can be short, so we should do what we love. For my grandfather, that was giving back. I know my grandfather's love for volunteering and giving back to the community influenced his children. My mom instilled this virtue in me, and I will continue to help others as a way to carry on a family's love. Over the years, my mom and I volunteered hundreds of community service hours. My mom exhibits compassion, and I know this came from her upbringing because my grandparents were great role models. The students attending the new middle school may use my grandfather's life as an example to help them make a difference within their families, schools, and community. Our society is so often leans towards the recognition of those already in the spotlight. Having a school named after my grandfather would be a wonderful way to recognize him. The students who attend the school would have a positive role model to look up to. My mom was a teacher, and many other family members are carrying on the Mizaki tradition by serving in the community. Renaming a school after him would be a fitting way to truly honor my grandfather, Harry Mizaki's legacy.
Joe Trapani, and it says that Christina Brunini will speak.
It's me again. I'm speaking on behalf of my great uncle, Joe Trapani. Unfortunately, his wife, my aunt, just passed away, so he was unable to make the hearing here this evening. The Mizaki family is planning to submit Harry's name to the Vineland School Board of Education for renaming the school in his honor and memory as a city of the, excuse me, city of Vineland firefighter who died serving the city of Vineland. The Mizaki family believes his qualifications will fill in all the boxes plus some that is required by the Board of Ed. Harry was a volunteer and lieutenant for the City of Vineland Fire Department and volunteered as an ambulance driver for them. He served as the chairman of the firemen's board and was awarded the man of the year by Vineland J.C.'s in 1967. Harry also worked as a volunteer in several organizations in Vineland. Harry and two other firemen, who were nicknamed the Three Young Amigos, to this day have not forgiven me for taking them out of town to go bowling. As a result, they missed the burning of the fireworks company in Vineland. Harry did not want to miss any chance to fight a fire. For those who are not familiar with the junkyard fire that Harry and other firefighters were fighting, the junkyard shed was full of recycled paper and unknown to them that there was some plastics which gave off toxic fumes. It is my understanding that Harry was the first to enter the shed and was overcome with the toxic fumes and died from this toxic inhalation. His courageous death has not been in vain. I feel it spung local and state officials for the need to pass regulation enlisting hazardous materials to protect further firemen with the safety equipment they wear. Harry served in the Army during the Korean conflict, and so did I. I thank you for memorizing all of the veterans. Harry died serving and protecting his beloved city of Vineland. Thank you for your time and consideration. Joe Trapani.
Thank you for this opportunity. I'm Cynthia Mizaki Brunini, the proud daughter of Harry Mizaki. I will never forget the night of November 1st, 1966. My mother, Rita, was at the Dan Barcy School PTA meeting. My dad was at home with me and my three-year-old brother, Gary. The TV was on, but I still heard the fire whistle go off. I told my dad, and I was excited, he was going on the fire truck to put out a fire with his older brothers. Little did I know, this would be the last time I would see my dad. I was seven years old. Harry was an humble individual who lived and exemplified what is important in life, the giving of oneself. I believe my father is not defined by his tragic death, but by a lifetime of service, volunteer service he gave to the city he was born in and loved. Our neighbor on Baylor Avenue made these comments about my dad after he died. Harry was the type of person you look up to and admire. Not only would he do a friend a favor, but he would also go out of his way to help anyone. He was a man of modest earnings. Harry was very active in the community. He was a warm and devoted father to his children. I'm going to describe my dad using the six pillars of characteristics the students at the new school are using. First, respect. Harry showed the utmost respect for the lives of people and property in Vineland when he became a volunteer firefighter and a volunteer ambulance driver with Company Number One in 1957. Over 1,000 people from this area attended his funeral. He was 36 years old. Second, responsibility. My dad had a full-time job. He volunteered in the community and at Dan Barcy School. He was a dedicated volunteer for the fire company and participated in community and social events. My uncle Joe Trapani told me my dad only missed one fire during his time with the department. Third, caring. Harry was a loving husband to his wife of 11 years, Rita Trapani. He spent his time with his children at my school in the neighborhood. He loved being the permanent chair for the fire department's children's Christmas party. Fourth, trustworthy. Many people depended on my dad. He was a man of honesty and integrity. The fire department knew Harry could be trusted with any job. He volunteered for several different statewide firemen's organizations and became a lieutenant in the department. Fifth, Harry actively volunteered no matter what organization needed help, such as the Newcombe Hospital, NICE at Columbus, the American Red Cross, to name a few. He treated everyone with equal, equality, and dignity. Sixth, citizenship. Harry felt the duty to bravely serve his country and enlist in the U.S. Army during the Korean War, where he received several medals and was honorably discharged. I believe it is our call, our turn to answer the call. I respectfully ask you to select Harry Mizaki. He dedicated his life serving his country and hometown as a volunteer firefighter, ambulance driver, and community servant. Nothing for, asking for nothing in return. Naming a school after a firefighter would be the first for this city. As a former teacher consultant, I know it is important for students to have a positive role model and mentors. Harry's humble life story may be an inspiration to the youth of today and for our future. Thank you, and I appreciate all the other nominees who represent the best of Vineland.
I believe we're all here tonight to honor all the nominees, some from the past, from the recent past, and some that will be enduring the same fate as those that we try to honor here. We will all die at some point. I believe that the school should remain the name it is now, Lincoln Avenue School. Lincoln is the President of the United States that, not unlike today, brought the country together. We have more divisions as a result of politics, money, and other influence. I believe the policy is in need of revision or deletion, as noted by one of the nominators for other people, another person here tonight. I've been to a lot of these meetings, and I've seen the board manipulated by various peoples in the public and also among themselves. When you took your oath, you said you would be impartial and justly and faithfully carry out your duties to the best of your abilities. However, in this digital age, there's an advantage of people being able to get the word out, not to the residents of Vineland and the residents of New Jersey, who put up $50 million for the structure. Why does this have to be changed now? Because there are a few people in the board who have exhibited what I consider to be a conflict of interest. Conflict of interest can be the appearance of that through favoritism, through a number of other financial, social, and other means by innuendo and other undue influences. I hope that this board will do what it was elected to do, listen to us all, but recognize that you have another option tonight to vote or not vote. Nothing requires you to vote. You can abstain, recuse yourself, or simply just allow the public to have what you think is its say. The public, part of the problem with the policy is the public is not defined. The public doesn't mean anybody who's on the internet from any state, never paid taxes or any other type of obligation to this particular district in this particular new school, an opportunity for many people. But if we're citizens of the country, we should also realize that we're residents of this city and this school districts, our responsibility is for the future, not the ego satisfaction of other people that may feel they are more entitled to be remembered. Grief and rejection are emotions. Nobody handles grief and rejection in the same way. Nobody handles grief and rejection in the same way. I hope that the board will remember this, and the public too, to understand their memories will always be their memories, whether it's on a building or not. Thank you.
Barbara Carmen.
Good evening to the board and everyone who took the time to come out here tonight. It was brought to the attention of the Carla Ritchie family that our father was nominated by Carl Simmons for consideration in naming a school in this district. Mr. Simmons sent his letter at a time when no schools were being renamed. However, as of July 11th, 2018, the board had opened the process to rename Lincoln Avenue Middle School. At this time, myself, my sister Pamela Lothenberg, and all of the Carla A. Ritchie family thought we would also submit a letter. Carla A. Ritchie was a World War II veteran. He enlisted at a young age, ready, willing, and able to serve his country. He served in the Air Force, becoming a first lieutenant with the 487th Fighter Squadron and the 357th Second Fighter Group, rising to the rank of captain. Upon returning from the war, he married our mother Kathy, raised a family, one son and two daughters. He was a lifelong devoted and active member of the Sacred Heart Parish, dedicated family man, and a wonderful father. He went on to pursue his education with the mindset of helping others to pursue their dreams. He studied at Glassboro State College. He earned his master's degree in school administration at Temple University and was working on his doctorate. His understanding of human nature helped him earn admiration and respect from friends, family, and coworkers. Many of our own family, friends, neighbors, went on to pursue careers in education. The love of teaching is not something you can buy. It's a passion that an individual possesses and passes on to others, creating an atmosphere of learning and excitement. It's a gift Carla A. Ritchie had. From 1948 to 84, he required a rich list of achievements in this school district. From teaching fifth and eighth, sixth grades at the South Vineland School, he became a teaching principal, opening and becoming the first principal of Leuchter School in 1951, Open Johnston School in 1956, and he was also the principal there while at the same time supervising many schools at that time between 1957 and 1963. Some schools are long gone, such as the Kingman School, North Vineland, Orchard Road, East Avenue, Oak and Main, South Vineland School, Butler Avenue Schools. He then moved to the Central Office, as it was called back in the day, where he began a new direction in his career and also a new direction for the Vineland school system.
Ms. Carmen, I'm sorry, I hate to cut you off, but the three minutes is up.
Well, we're respectfully submitting the name of our father, a lifelong violander, for the board's consideration. Thank you.
Danielle Carroll.
This is a bittersweet evening for me. Tomorrow will be eight years since my mom died, and tonight I'm asking you to give her memory the privilege to grace the Lincoln School name. Volunteerism, what is it? According to dictionary.com, it is the practice of offering one's time to worthwhile activities in one's community. Community is defined a social group of members who reside in a specific locality. Combine both of these words, and you have Michelle Morgan, my mom. No, my mother did not dedicate herself to the military. She was not a certified educator, nor did her resume list public safety or service because she did not limit herself to one avenue of life. To put it simply, my mother was a violander from age six in 1948, when she, her mother and brother immigrated from Belgium after surviving Nazi occupation. She never left the community and died a proud member of Vineland. My mother dedicated countless hours as a Girl Scout leader during the mid-'70s and early-'80s, serving as my troop leader as well as other girls' leaders, specifically an urban troop, which broke the standard of the time. It did not matter what color, race, ethnicity, or culture these girls were. To her, what mattered was that these girls came from all walks of life. My mom lived the Girl Scout motto, be prepared and ready to help whenever she was needed. Her love for the Scouts eventually led to her employment in the mid-'80s with the organization as the liaison for volunteer leaders. Another commitment as a volunteer found Michelle involved with the county college. Her husband Frank Basil was the solicitor for the college for 29 years and died while in that position. Together, they loved the college. Therefore, she decided to have his memory cemented in the college with a dedication to him, with naming the conference room after him within the Luciano Center, reaching out to many people in the community to help make this happen. I'm sorry. She also established a scholarship in Frank Basil's name, which awarded yearly since 2006 to a student whose interest lies in criminal law or English. A specific nonprofit organization mom loved was the Bay Atlantic Symphony. This is the group that allowed her passion to shine for the arts. She dedicated herself to further help fundraises, help fund, raise funds for the symphony. And she called on all her community artists to help with those donations. When my mom died, she left big shoes to fill with her selfless dedication to the community. I could only hope to fill a quarter of them one day. However, I'm fortunate enough that she did instill volunteerism in me as a child, which led to my employment as an educator. Through my volunteer activities at the school, my mother's legacy through me has reached and will reach hundreds of students. These activities include an American Dream Service Learning Project. Thank you very much. Before I leave, I just wanted to let you know I would love this imprint to be on my, for my mother, on this school, Michelle Morgan Middle School. Thank you.
Roberta Cordell.
Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I'm here in support of Sergeant Dominic Pillas' nomination. It was a sad and dark time for us back then, and it still is. I hear a lot of family members mention their occupations and their memories and their hopes and dreams. This will never come for Sergeant Dominic Pillas because doesn't have a spouse, he doesn't have children, will never have grandchildren. His dream of the little white picket fence will never happen. I had a whole different speech to say, but after the Pillas crowd is gone, after all of his friends and his coworkers and his Army buddies are gone, so will Dominic's I feel that Vineland sticks behind their education and their schools and the maintenance of these schools. And one way to keep his memory alive and to pass it on, because there would be no one else to do it for him, would be to name a school after him. Some people may say, well, he has, he has a movie. He has a day of honor. If you see this movie one time, you don't want to see it again. And it's a matter of choice, it's not demand. A day of remembrance, look what happened to Christmas and Thanksgiving. A school will always be there, and it won't be ignored. Dominic Pillas gave everything to protect his town, his state, his country, and basically the world. He never got to come back to pursue his dreams, his life, and his goals. It would be such an honor to go by and see his name up there every day. It's not that we're being greedy or we want it all, because it's not true, we don't. He just needs to be remembered in the future. And if you want your kids to grow strong and faithful and respectful, I see no other way. Thank you.
Angela Detavio.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Angela Detavio, and I'm here to share a letter from Mrs. Connie Wozunk, who is a former student of Mr. Trelonte. Hello, my name is Connie Gaetano Wozunk, and I would love to recommend the Lincoln Avenue Middle School be renamed the Salvatore Trelonte Middle School. I am proud to have been one of his seventh-grade students at Memorial. Besides being one of my favorite teachers of my educational career, he has also placed a love for science in my heart. I remember his science club, where we had the opportunity to complete experiments that we normally could not do during regular class time. I fell in love with learning about the human body and using the microscopes to see things unseeable with my normal eyes. My love grew into science so much that I majored in biology and chemistry in college in my pursuit of going to medical school. The way he taught, bringing life to any concept captured my attention as well as my imagination and curiosity. He made those difficult concepts easier and fun to learn because he believed full-heartedly in what he was teaching. His compassion and kindness to all his students made it a joy to want to be in his class. Every day, I looked forward to spending time there. Because our families were friends, he was able to take me home when it was too dark or cold to walk the long distance back home. He truly cared for each of his students, looking out for our well-being. He was truly an inspiration and great mentor, coaching and pushing me to what I am today, a science teacher of 20-plus years. His love for teaching and love for science has been passed on to me. For this and much more, I am truly grateful, Mr. Trelonte. This is from Miss Connie Wozunk, science teacher at Wallace Middle School. Thank you.
Steve Eisenman.
Good evening to everybody, and I'm here to talk about Miles Lerman. Miles Lerman has been a citizen of Vineland for a long time, but who fought the Nazis in his native Poland, became an American immigrant success story, and went on to help found a national museum dedicated to keeping the memory of the Holocaust and its victims and survivors alive. Mr. Lerman, he was a founder and chairman of the U.S. Holocaust Memorial Museum in Washington. He was an extraordinary human being, said Sarah Bloomfield, the director of the museum. He fought the Nazis and the forces of Poland, and having survived that, he felt everything was possible. And he used to have a saying, "If you got lemons, you make lemonade." Mr. Lerman is visionary and a doer and a fighting spirit. He used to say to Sarah, "You are my comrade in arms," he said. Every time I would see an obstacle, Miles would see an opportunity. He was born in Poland as part of a prosperous family that owned four mills, but the Nazis seized the business, and you guess what happened after that? He entered the concentration camp, and his mom entered the Bledsiak concentration camp where she died. But the Nazis failed to hold him. He escaped the labor camp, and for nearly two years, he fought the Nazis with other partisans and German supply lines and hiding Jewish refugees. After the war, Mr. Lerman met Mrs. Lerman, or Chris, as we know her, in 1947, and then they moved to New York, and then they came to the city of Vineland. And in Vineland, after 10 years of farming, which I guess he had enough dealing with chickens, so he decided to start opening up his own business. And Mr. Lerman was penniless when he came here. And Mr. Lerman was involved in bringing about the Holocaust Museum and planning stages, appointed by President Jimmy Carter to government board of future museums, and he was reappointed by every president since then. Mr. Lerman, the recipient of 11 honorary degrees, also led efforts to build a memorial in Bledsiak, where about a half a million Jews died. He also hit his daughter and himself, met with Pope John II, and how much it meant to him. Mr. Lerman told the Pope that in Bledsiak, his project is there in their native Polish language, and the Pope then stroked his cheek and said, "That's good." It was like two old souls recognizing a mission accomplished. In addition to his wife of 62 years and daughter, Mr. Lerman is survived by his son David and five grandchildren and six grandchildren and a brother. After the, Miles, here's, here's points I want to speak about Miles. Miles loved to read and continued to aspire to learn more, and he always wanted to learn more. And the funny joke was, he asked, he came up to me one time, and he said, "Steve, can you teach me about baseball?" And I said, "Really?" He was very generous to all the people of all faiths.
Sir, we have to wrap up, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Three minutes is up.
Okay, he spoke to joint sessions, but he was, most of all, he was very proud to be a violander. I mean, think about it. He saw the Pope, he was always proud about that. In fact, he was so proud about it that anytime he appreciated saying that he was a violander, and in fact, he's buried here in Vineland anyway, to make sure that means anything. Okay, thank you.
M.J. Einstein.
Good evening. The most important accomplishment in naming a school is to establish a role model for children in the school to emulate. Today, I was at a funeral at Lyons Cemetery, and I'd like to share with you the epitaph and a tombstone of the gentleman whom I'm speaking about, Miles Lerman. Miles Lerman was founder and chairman of the United States Holocaust Memorial Museum. You heard that from the previous speaker. He was a partisan fighter, a freedom fighter, who defended the rights of people being persecuted in prejudice. He was a Holocaust survivor, a proud American citizen, a resident of Vineland, New Jersey. He was a champion of remembrance, devoted to human rights and building bridges of tolerance. He died in 2008. What could be a greater message for children to emulate than the tolerance of people from all walks of life, regardless of color, race, or creed? I nominate Miles Lerman. Thank you.
Sam Fioki. Sam Fiocchi.
Good evening, everyone, and school board members, and I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to propose the nomination of my father, Leirio Lee Fiocchi, for this honor. And I am humbled and honored because there's... All of the candidates are so worthy and prestigious that it humbles me that I'm allowed to put my father in the name with such a list. I'm here on behalf of the Fiocchi family, his descendants, myself, Samuel Fiocchi, my brother, Leirio Butch Fiocchi, my sister Carol Fiocchi Koya, all of our children and our grandchildren. Father was born here in, actually, what was Landis Township in 1917, and which later became the city of Vinland, of Santo Fiocchi and Alvera Nacelli Fiocchi. So the Fiocchi family has been here over 100 years. He attended all the... My grandfather was a firm believer, as an immigrant, that education was so important. He made sure all the children went to school. My father was actually a graduate of Vinland High School in 1935. He graduated with honors, and because of his excellent education at Vinland, he learned to speak French fluently. Afterwards, he always had an eye for business, he didn't want to stay on the family farm. So he worked for various farm-related industries in Vinland, and then came as call to duty during World War II. His older brother had already been serving in the Navy in the Pacific Theater, and his younger brother, Ido, enlisted and joined in the U.S. Infantry in World War II. My father was accepted as a cadet pilot trainee for the United States, which was Army Air Corps, which later became the United States Air Force. He graduated with his program, got his wings at Chukasek... I think it was Chukasek Air Force Base in Oklahoma, and was commissioned as a second lieutenant. Because of his fluency in French, and because the Allies had, were able to build a lot of aircraft, but did not have a lot of pilots, he was kept here stateside to teach the French pilots to how to fly. And as a result, he trained hundreds of French pilots that became part of the war effort in World War II. I guess I went a little too far. Anyway, he... After his discharge, his honorable discharge, he came back to Vinland, he started a family, started a family business, but he always had time to devote to his community. He was a board of, secretary of the Board of Health for Landis Township before it incorporated. He was a member of the Knights of Columbus, organizing food drives, polio, research. But I think he was most proud of, he was one of the founders of East Vinland Little League with my uncle Michael. They used, they allowed, they allowed the family farm to be used as the baseball fields, which are still there today. They organized volunteers, all this was done with volunteer money and volunteer work to get the fields done. So, again, I thank you so much for this consideration, and and remind you that, you know, that all of the candidates are extremely worthy. Thank you.
Harry Foreman. I'm sorry, Furman.
Good evening. I don't want to repeat what Mr. Eisenman said and what Mr. Einstein said, but I'm going to fill in some of the gaps with regard to Miles Lerman. Miles Lerman's story is a story that means a lot to a community like ours. A diverse community, an ethnic community, a community of many different types of people. Miles Lerman was an immigrant who came here to Vinland at the age of 27 in 1948. As was said before, he had nothing. Most of his family was gone. He had experienced adversity. He had escaped from a forced labor camp. He had fought the Nazis in the woods. He knew what it meant to see evil. He came here to Vinland at the age of 27 with nothing but a smile and a dream. Because he believed Vinland was a place where one could have that dream. Yes, he started off with chickens, as many people did. That's why we originally called the Poultry Clan. And because there was a potential competitor in the community who believed in what we would now call paying it forward, he decided to get into the home heating fuel business. And that eventually became an oil business, and then real estate, and he became very successful. And he was involved in all sorts of civic causes in this community, and was philanthropic. But his major contribution, and the one that has the most to do with children and education, has to do with the most ambitious task that he took on. He was centrally involved in raising $190 million of private money to build the U.S. Holocaust Memorial Museum over the course of a decade. He did so because he believed that ultimately it was not a memorial that was necessary for this country, but a teaching tool, an educational tool. And when the museum opened in 1993 with he as its chairman, this ordinary man from Vinland, New Jersey, it has seen more than 40 million come through its door, many of them children in our community, who have gone to the Holocaust Museum, and teachers who have gone for education, and who have made it a part of the curriculum that is central, and has become a renowned part of this district that goes back because Miles Lerman, who was one of those advocates of Holocaust education in the 1970s, when there was no one else in the state, no other district except one else, other, that was interested in this subject. So I would say this in closing. He did many things, as just an ordinary man. He was involved, ultimately set up what was called the Committee on Conscious, which became involved in contemporary issues such as the Darfur crisis. One minute. So I would say this.
Time's actually up.
I'm done?
Time is up, yeah.
So that's my voice.
Thank you, sir.
Joe F. Griffies.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Joe Griffies, I'm a proud Vietnam veteran. Vietnam veterans have a motto, "We don't leave veterans behind." Dominic Pillow belonged to two groups. The first group is, he's a member of only 7,500 people in our country out of 350 million that have lost their lives in the 19 war in Iraq and Afghanistan. The second group he belongs to is a group of less than 3/4 of 1% that represents the fighting, the bad guys over there, so they don't come here for our freedom. 3/4 of a percent of 350 million people. 400,000 veterans have done more than four tours in Iraq and Afghanistan. Whether Dominic Pillow... You know, it's funny. He graduated at 17, and he was mad because he got appendicitis, and he was held up a month going in the Army. I gave a talk in Philadelphia about a month ago with Rob O'Neill, the guy who killed Bin Laden.
Sir, if you can, just speak away from the microphone.
Okay, sorry about that. If only we knew what they do over there when they get back home over here, we would look at our veterans a lot different. If we're real quiet, we can hear Dominic in this room tonight. His spirit's here and alive. Because he says, "Whether I win or lose, I'm up against some really good candidates." "I won. The reason I won is, I went over there to bring democracy to the people in Africa, and I gave my life for it, I raised my hand to die." He says, "We're showing democracy tonight to assemble, to vote, to argue, to get angry, to get happy, to turn around and voice our opinion." That's why Dominic cannot lose tonight, because he died for democracy, and it's alive tonight. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this time, we're going to take a quick five-minute recess, and we will be right back.
I mean, it's helping, but it's not getting to a lot of... It's not getting to a lot of people. Perhaps in the school going and they go things with the state, that's what is happening. And the one that's good, that's just got to try and share. I'm talking about the multiple businesses, like this, this is only maybe to say, probably get turned down after school.
Folks, we're gonna get started?
Ms. Spinelli.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna call our next speaker.
Marilyn Jordan Hill.
Hello. My family and I are proud to be here, speaking about Edgar Hill. We thank you for the nomination, for to name here the Lincoln Avenue Middle School in memory of our... of a member of our community. Thank you. Edgar was a dedicated teacher at Memorial Middle School in Finland for thirty-two years. At the end of the year, in June nineteen ninety-six, he came to Picture Rocks where we had decided that we would retire. Excuse me. He started to mow the grass, and twenty minutes later, he was dead. He planned to go back to school in the fall and make preparations to retire in December. He wanted to make the transition for the new teacher smooth. He was hired in nineteen sixty-four to teach science to seventh and eighth grade children. Then after three years, he reached his tenure, and he was appointed department head. He started teaching in room two oh seven, and after thirty-two years of teaching, his last day of teaching was in room two oh seven. It's almost like his second home. He wasn't retired... He wasn't ready to completely retire because he was filling out applications to be a substitute teacher in Pennsylvania. He and a few teachers felt that their... What they were teaching was not really good science. So they started teaching a program to have more of a hands-on for the kids. Soon they got new books, and it was called IPS, Introduction to Physical Science. This was a new teaching program that allowed the children to have a hands-on and see and understand science as it was happening. Excuse me. He had animals in his classroom, snakes, rabbits, to name a few, and a ferret. The children would interact with these animals, and sometimes they would have to take them home. On Thanksgiving, he took a twenty-two pound turkey and turned it loose in the school, and it walked all over the school, in and out all of the classrooms, on all the floors. He even... We had a pot-bellied pig, and he took that in for the kids to play with. He organized parties, dances, pep rallies. He entertained, and he was the entertainer. He had talent shows all child swear on the stage, and he was the emcee. He downed a clown suit, taught them walking on his hands, and stood on his head, invited the children to learn how to do it.
Ms. Jordan Hill, your time is up.
Oh, it's up?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, thank you so much. I appreciate the time.
Mary Price Hill.
Good evening. I'm speaking on behalf of my father Edgar Hill. My father was a humanitarian. When he was in the Air Force, he was forced... He was faced with racism, straight on. He was stationed in Biloxi, Mississippi, and after a few airmen went to a nice restaurant in town, one of the men in their group was not allowed to enter. He was African-American. He told his commanding officer, and... And they no longer went to that restaurant after that, and nobody on the military base. My father helped with the Puerto Rican farm workers. He saw that they were hot in the fields. He brought them to our home, served them a meal, and let them swim in our pool. My father never let a child go hungry. He carried money in his pocket. If they were short on lunch money, or if they just wanted ice cream, he gave it to them, along with making Christmas cookies and such. I was approached by one of his former students when she found out that I had nominated him, and she told me that my father changed her entire life. She was bullied. He used to take her out of her class and just ask her how she was doing. During my father's career, he earned several educational awards, including Educator of the Year, many Educator of the Year, Teacher of the Year awards, as well as who's who. He dedicated his entire life to his children. He felt that the gift that he was given to teach children was a gift from God. He was raised... He was the sixth of seven children. He was a thirteen-pound baby. He was made fun of in school. He was bullied, so he didn't ride the school bus. He walked to school. He had perfect attendance. He graduated with honors, top of his class. He attended Gettysburg College, Lycoming College, and Glassboro State College when he moved to New Jersey to obtain his teaching certificate in New Jersey. He also earned a medical technology certificate while he was working in Williamsport at a hospital, and he worked at Millville and Newcombe Hospitals while he worked here until he retired. My father was a member of the United States Air Force. He was enlisted for four years, fifty-seven to sixty-one. He was a pilot, and he was a... He was honorably discharged as airmen first class. We're just so grateful that you gave us this honor. We want to thank Vonnin for naming the school after a member of our community, the outpour of support that we've gotten from our friends, our family, online. And that's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
William Janarone.
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. As a former board member, it's a pleasure to see the five... the five-year plan called "The Future Is Now" is working so well, under which the Lincoln Avenue School fell. All of us in this room try our best to instill respect, character, commitment, compassion, a sense of humanity, and a love of country in our children, especially middle-school-aged kids. It is so important because their ever-expanding world invites it, and our worthy goal is to help them become good citizens. In today's world, this is not an easy task. There are so many distractions from this goal. The kids need all the help we can get them. My opinion is that naming a middle school should have an identifiable relevance to its students. Kids of middle-school age need heroes and heroines to guide them. They possess the qualities the kids seek, and we teach. Sergeant Dominic Pillar is such an American hero. We all know this, including the middle-aged kids. Many have said that he was an affable lover of life with a deep love for his country and humanity. He breathed his last breath on a military mission to save lives and allow thousands of people to eat. In Somalia at that time, there were four different factions fighting, and they were fighting for the food that the UN and the US and other countries in the world provided for the refugees of that civil war. They never got it. They were starving to death by the thousands. He was a brave young man. As an Army Ranger, made the supreme sacrifice for his country and humanity that was seeking a democratic way of life. He is so deserving of recognition for his valor, for his sacrifice, and for his love of country.
Mr. Janarone, time's up, sir.
This American hero...
Time is up.
Thank you.
Teri Kuhnreich.
Good evening. First and foremost, I want to say that it's extremely impressive to listen to the people that have been nominated. I have nothing but respect for all. I'm a patriot. My family has always been patriotic. Soldiers, our hats are tipped to you, the other people as well. I'm not here against anyone. Instead, I'm here for someone. I am here to support Miles Lerman. I knew Miles when I was a baby. I sat on his knee. He, like my parents, was a Holocaust survivor. He came with nothing, and he built a fortune. You've heard three other people talk about his background as a partisan, as a fighter. But he fought for the people of Ireland. He fought for education. I teach Search for Conscience. Every year, I take my students to Washington DC, to the Holocaust Museum. Every year, I take my students to Washington DC, to the Holocaust Museum. As you heard, he was a big component in the creation of this museum. I remember one time we were driving to the museum and a truck jackknifed in front of the bus and we were late. We were scheduled, but we were late. When we got there, they were ready to send us away because we missed our appointment with the docents. All I had to do is say "Vineyard" and they said "Miles Lerman"? I said yes. We walked right in. He has the reputation. This is going to be a middle school. As Mr. Furman mentioned, we have a very diverse community. I taught middle school. I teach high school. They need somebody, and all of the people here fit the idea of hero, but the idea of somebody, a minority, somebody who's unique, who overcame adversity, Nazis, the hell that he went through in his life. This is a man that they could look up to and say, you know what? If he could do it, so can I. And that is why I think Miles Lerman is an excellent choice. Not only was he a survivor, but his wife, his wife's sister, they lost so much and he showed the character, the motivation and ambition by starting in this country which he loved, in which he was loyal to, and the city of Ireland exceptionally philanthropic. So, my consideration, my nomination is for Miles Lerman. Thank you.
Carol Loguadisi. I apologize if I didn't say your name right. Oh, okay.
Good evening. I'm here to ask for the naming of the Lincoln Avenue School be named for Mark Malamed. Mark was a Vineyard resident for over 45 years. He was a middle-school teacher at Veterans Memorial School. He retired after 25 years of teaching. He was involved with the National Junior Honor Society, Odyssey of the Mind and the Vineyard All-Middle School Place for Clubs and Organizations, which he founded. He bought, as many teachers do, many supplies and other supplemental teaching aids to help teach. During his distinguished teaching career, he received the following honors: the 1991 Governor's Teacher of the Year Award, the 1992 Exchange Club Educator of the Year, the 1995 NJEA Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Award for Human and Civil Rights. Mark was a huge proponent of Black History Month. He bought all kinds of items to help express the struggle. He was 100% committed to equality and made sure his students partook in that type of education. Mark started the Gabriel Project to bring children here for heart surgeries. Mark and his students were honored by the Tanzanian government at the United Nations. He directed musicals at Memorial for many years and that was his major passion, theater. Teaching kids to work together and trust their talents and giving especially the shy, quiet ones an opportunity to be heard and recognized and grow. His single strongest passion was children. He loved the joy they took from learning and he especially loved teaching them through theater. One thing that very few do not know is that throughout the years, Mark would want to help certain people, a few in the Vineyard school system financially. He would buy savings bonds for them. They were discovered in his safe deposit box and to this day, there are two people his family tried to reach but could not. Mark worked, Mark wanted to give money to them. He gave to others and his family was happily able to surprise them with their gift. Mark's brother said he was the funniest person he knew and many felt that way.
Good evening, members of the Board and Central Administration. Before I started, I wanted to share an exchange I had with one of the kids I work with at an after-school program, Nico. I was telling Nico that I wouldn't be at school on Wednesday because I was giving a speech about the naming of a new school and he wisely suggested that the Board name the Lincoln Avenue Middle School "The Nico School" after himself. And I just wanted to share that cute story because it should remind us all that tonight is for the students. Adults shouldn't argue over this and take things personally. It's such a great thing that all of these people are here to speak about some truly exceptional Vinelanders. Anyhow, I'm here tonight to talk about a selfless and courageous Vinelander, Miles Lerman. As you may know, Miles Lerman was a survivor of the Holocaust, resident of Vineyard, philanthropist and a major force in advocating for the creation of the US Holocaust Museum and he managed to escape a concentration camp to the forests of Ukraine where he fought valiantly as a part of the Jewish Resistance. As an alumnus of Mrs. Kuhnreich's Emmy Award-winning Search for Conscience class and a current student at Washington DC, I've been to the Holocaust Museum numerous times and as such, I'm a direct beneficiary of Mr. Lerman's contributions to Vineyard students. I've also viewed the artwork he donated that is dedicated to remembering the Jewish partisans of World War II at Beth Israel Synagogue and is used as an instructional aid for our 7th grade Holocaust education curriculum. As hard as it is to say, Holocaust survivors are becoming fewer and fewer. It's important that we as a city commit to never forget the Holocaust. By renaming the Lincoln Avenue Middle School for Miles Lerman, Vineyard would be committing to the noble effort of remembering those who have perished in the Holocaust and honoring the memory of a man who made it his mission in life to educate our students on the Holocaust. Many may not know this, but Vineyard attracted a large community of Holocaust survivors and by naming the school for Miles Lerman, this school would not only represent and memorialize him, but also the other survivors who chose Vineyard as their home and contributed to our community. The Holocaust was a tumultuous time characterized by despair, fear and complete dehumanization of our fellow man. Out of the darkness, however, came the resilience of individuals such as Miles Lerman. A man who had encountered so much hatred, so much anguish, came into Vineyard with nothing, looking to make our community a more thoughtful and kind place to live. Miles Lerman's story inspires hope and as such, the Miles Lerman Middle School would instill hope and perseverance amongst all of Vineyard students in need of guidance. Miles Lerman was a great and honorable man, whose impact is still felt by students 10 years after his death. In a time of great uncertainty amongst our political leaders, let's come together as a community and embrace the virtues that shaped Miles Lerman's life: courage, perseverance and hope. Naming this school for Miles Lerman would send a message to the world that Vineyard will forever honor the men and women killed in the Holocaust and that we will never forget. It would honor a kind and wonderful man who had contributed to the education of our students. I want to end with a quote that perfectly exemplifies Miles Lerman's character. Anne Frank in her famous diary said, "Where there's hope, there's life. It fills us with fresh courage and makes us strong again." Let's bring back a little hope for our students and rename Lincoln Avenue for Miles Lerman. Thank you for your time tonight.
Lisa Mizaki.
Board members and other fellow nominees, my name is Dr. Lisa Mizaki, niece of Harry Mizaki. Sadly, I was only four years old when Harry died. I was in class at Lanish Junior High in the 7th grade when I heard his name again. I don't remember the teacher's name or what class I was in. The teacher was talking about smoke inhalation, so maybe it was a science class. She then said about eight to nine years ago that there was a volunteer fireman that died fighting a junkyard fire here in Vineyard and that he died from toxic smoke inhalation. She then said, I think his last name was Mizaki. She then looked at me and asked, "Were you related to him?" I shook my head. I felt proud, proud and sad at the same time. In 2011, when I was moving my 90-year-old aunt in to live with me, I found some old newspaper articles about a fire in November of 1966 in my aunt's shed. My Uncle Silvio, who was Harry's brother, must have saved all the articles from the Vine Times Journal. These articles were 45 years old. They were older than my Uncle Harry was when he died. My uncle was the youngest of 10 children and he was only 36 when he died. I in turn sent the newspaper clippings to Cindy, his daughter. After reading all the newspaper articles about my Uncle Harry and how much he was loved and admired by his community and everything he did for this community, I believe that I would have loved this man dearly like a father. My Uncle Harry was lieutenant in Company One, as well as my Uncle Aldo Mizaki, who was fire chief of Company One. My Uncle Howard Davis and his son-in-law Wesley How are also firemen. I may not be a firefighter like my Uncle Harry, but I also think it is important to support this community like he did. I've been showing my love by supporting and helping this community for over 20 years. I am very proud to say that I became a veterinarian to help save the lives of the unwanted and abused animals of Cumberland County. Maybe in some way, I got this giving spirit from him. It would be a great honor for Harry's children, Cindy and Gary, and the rest of our family to see the name of Harry Mizaki on the new Lincoln Avenue School. I for one would take great pride in this, knowing that it would be there potentially forever to carry on the Mizaki name. The Mizaki name ends with my Uncle Harry's nieces and nephews. However, my Uncle Harry's legacy can continue on through the students who go to this new middle school. I respectfully want to thank the Board members for giving me the opportunity to speak and for hearing statements from other family members, especially from his daughter Cindy and granddaughter Christina. November 1st is the 52nd anniversary of my Uncle Harry's death. All of you as Board members have the ability to name the new Lincoln Avenue School after Harry P. Mizaki or a name of importance that will honor all the firefighters that put their lives on the line every time they respond to a call of duty and give them the recognition that they also proudly deserve.
Danny R. McKnight, Colonel, US Army, retired.
Thank you each and every one of you here for everything you've said. Most importantly, thank you for letting me be here with you tonight. It was a nice little fly-up from Florida, but I am here. It's a little cool outside. I want to talk about someone who's been talked about a lot tonight and I'm not sure we could even talk enough about him, and that is Sergeant Dominic Pila. I am here to speak on his behalf and his family's behalf and I'm like part of their family now. Sergeant Dominic Pila was not just a soldier, not just a Ranger. He was a brilliant young man and a great leader. He understood what it meant to live the Ranger creed, which a special part is, you will never leave a man behind. Sergeant Pila was killed in Mogadishu, Somalia on October 3rd of 1993 in that event known as Black Hawk Down. The important thing though is how and why he gave his life is a special and amazing thing. A young man that was almost just 19-years-old by the name of Todd Blackburn fell out of a helicopter, fast roping. He was seriously injured, probably going to die. He did not die because Sergeant Dominic Pila stepped up and made sure that he gave Todd what he needed, the ability to live. Todd Blackburn was put in a vehicle and Sergeant Pila was right behind him in that vehicle, protecting Todd Blackburn. Todd Blackburn now is married and has a family. He has that because of Sergeant Dominic Pila. The details of what Sergeant Pila did is amazing because he volunteered to put himself in harm's way to get one of his Rangers back to safety. He did that and it's something that I know will never, ever be forgotten. Dominic Pila is my hero and he will continue to always live the Ranger creed. Thank you. God bless you and God bless America.
Good evening, members of the Board and Dr. Grugio. I wanted to thank the Board for listening to all of our speeches tonight. I have known or have heard of many of these names and making the choice between people like Frank Jerradano, who was a great man and I went to school with, Mark Malamed, who was dedicated to the students, to our serviceman, Dominic Pila, who served his country. But I also believe there was many who served our country, many veterans are nominated and I believe we have Veterans Memorial School. It was originally Memorial School and went to Veterans Memorial School to honor our veterans. I believe the man I nominated truly made a difference in the educational lives of our students. Miles Lerman was a hero. The man survived the Holocaust and when he came to live in Vineyard, he still had it in his heart to contribute to our community. Miles Lerman believed in service. He contributed to the Beth Israel Synagogue on Park Avenue where 7th graders of our district go each year to learn about the Holocaust. Miles Lerman was a fighter. In the Holocaust, he broke free from the concentration camp when he was just 22 and fought the Nazis with limited resources but a great deal of hope. The Miles Lerman School, Middle School, would send a message to our students that despite the challenges in life, even when the going gets tough, there is hope. What better message is there for the middle-school students? I nominated Miles Lerman because of his character, his bravery, his sacrifice and his courage. The Board policy states for the school to be named for someone, a person must have contributed to their time, funds, efforts or resources to a program, facility or volunteer organization within the school district or city. Miles Lerman did that tenfold. His national recognition and valor made him a uniquely deserving candidate for the renaming of the Lincoln Avenue Middle School. I urge the Board in a time where there aren't many Holocaust survivors left, name the school for Miles Lerman so that the Vineyard students will never forget the Holocaust. Thank you for your thoughtfulness consideration. Have a good night.
Jason Moore.
One of the first things that I wanted to say was you guys have a tough decision to make. I've been listening to a lot of the heroes and a lot of the great role models that you have to choose from here in Vineyard and it's exceptional. I think the only bad choice you could make would be not forming a consensus and not choosing one of these great role models for the students of the future. The reason I'm here to speak tonight in particular is for Dominic Pila. I served with him in Somalia. I was part of the task force that he was involved in and he was not only a teacher, a mentor, a coach, but also a Ranger that I was proud to have served with. He taught me many things and so he may not have taught in the typical sense of a school teacher, but I can tell you that he taught someone every single day and some of the things he taught saved lives. He saved my life and he saved the lives of a lot of other gentlemen that we served with. He taught me how to be a soldier. He taught me how to be a Ranger and he taught me how to be a man. And at 19, I think that's a pretty incredible accomplishment. He is someone that the children of this township would be well-deserved to look up to. would be well-deserved to look up to, to research, and to see all the things he did in his short time here. It's sad to say that he will no longer be around to do other great things, exceptional things in this township. I know that a lot of his counterparts have gone on to do wonderful things. And so, it kills me to know such a wonderful human being that was very special to me, and special to all the soldiers around him, is not gonna be around to see those things through and teach the children here in Vineland. But having his name on the middle school will allow them the opportunity to look at that, and look up to, and research what he did, and the type of citizen he was, and the things that he had done for Vineland. In closing, we worked in a no-defect environment, whether it was training or combat. And that meant that you couldn't make a mistake. Tension was always very high, stress levels were always very high. And one of the things that Dominic could always do was, through jokes and through laughter, was teach you how to diffuse the stress. And just because you knew that it was such an important task or an important mission, he was able to take you and diffuse that, and make light of it. And it made, like I said, an exceptional, easy environment to learn and be coached by. So, in closing, I would like to say that the fact that you have such great candidates, all of them, tonight to choose from is exceptional for a town here. And I would like to see you choose Dominic Pilla. Thank you.
Suzanne Morello.
In the recent past, four buildings and many facilities have been named to honor Vineland residents or educators. Tonight, I'm here to ask the Vineland Board of Education to continue this tradition. Dominic Pilla is a Vineland resident, and a graduate of Vineland Public Schools, as well as a decorated Army Ranger. On October 3rd, nineteen ninety-three, Sergeant Pilla became part of the history of the United States. With his family, city, nation, and the entire international community watching, Sergeant Pilla's valor, bravery, and character became known to all through his heroic actions in Somalia, ultimately leading to the loss of his own life. Dominic Pilla embodies the qualities that this district strives to embed in its students. Commitment, dedication, purpose, becoming part of something greater than self. These are the lessons intermediate students are encouraged to take to heart daily. What better way to promote and encourage young adults to connect and engage is there than to have an example showing them someone who may have been just like they are now? Dominic Pilla was an ordinary boy. He came from an ordinary family. He had no specific academic or athletic skills. But when it came to his life, he made an extraordinary sacrifice for the benefit of others. He became his best self in giving himself. That is a lesson that intermediate school students can relate to, should strive to model and achieve as they work through their days. Adolescence is a tough time. There's social media that bombards you with all kinds of things, self-doubt, there are body image issues, bullying, all of those kinds of things. Dominic Pilla is the perfect model that students of that age can relate to. This Board of Education has the opportunity to become a part of history by choosing to honor, champion, and thank Sergeant Pilla, as well as inspire generations of students who will walk through the doors of Intermediate School Number Two by naming it the Sergeant Dominic Pilla Intermediate School. Thank you so much.
Lorna Murray.
I am sharing this letter with you from a previous VHS football player. I am pleased to write this letter in support of naming a Vineland Public School after Salvatore Scherlante. I was very fortunate to know Mr. Scherlante during the early nineteen eighties, when he was an assistant coach, and I was the player for the Vineland High School football team. Coach Scherlante consistently exemplified all the traits that made an excellent coach and role model. He offered his considerable knowledge of football in a patient and respectful manner. His steady demeanor and patient teaching style made it easy for his players to learn the fundamentals of the game, but more importantly, impressed on them more enduring lessons of teamwork and respectful leadership. Beyond his knowledge and patience, the trait that most distinguished Coach Scherlante as an excellent teacher and role model was his compassion for his players. In a competitive and physically challenging sport, where toughness and bravado often dominate interactions between coach and player, Coach Scherlante always acted with compassion and empathy. One specific example stands out in my memory. Early in my junior year, I was fighting to earn a starting position on the team. During a practice leading up to an important game, I struggled with a bad case of the flu. Not wanting to jeopardize my chance to break into the starting lineup, I tried to stay in the practice despite not playing well. Whereas other coaches might have taken a hard-line approach, focused on the poor performance, or implored me to suck it up, Coach Scherlante recognized that I was struggling, and stepped in to make me sit out of the rest of the practice. In keeping with his coaching style, he did so in a kind, calm manner that made me realize I'd get another shot. This small kindness might seem an inconsequential act to some, but it stays with me to this day as a significant example of Coach Scherlante's compassion and respect for his players and students. In short, naming a Vineland Public School after Salvatore Scherlante would be a fitting tribute to a man who gave many years of outstanding service to the Vineland Public School system. But more importantly, it would recognize the combination of knowledge, caring, and dedication to students that made him an excellent teacher and role model. Sincerely, Patrick Simmons. I have one more very short letter. These are the words of a former student. Even as a young child, I could sense Mr. Scherlante's good nature. His kindness and dedication was very obvious to me. He was my seventh-grade teacher in nineteen seventy-five at Memorial School. I always looked forward to his class. I can still remember him standing by the blackboard, seriously teaching his lesson. He was a patient man. When my classmates were not paying attention to what he was teaching us, he would just stop and wait until he got their attention. I felt safe in his presence, just like I did when I was around my dad. He coached and volunteered with the school activities and other community organizations. He was a good man and deserves the recognition of the new school naming. He would be honored. Sincerely, Pana Papamihilakis. Thank you.
Charles Peel.
Good evening. I'm here as a brother-in-law who has nominated Frank Giordano for the naming of the new school. A lot of eloquent speeches, a lot of impressive credentials that have been tossed out there, so I'm gonna give you a few that I feel we should know about Frank. To me, he was a very simple man. He was opinionated, stubborn, could give you a hard time. But he started a lot of programs with kids in mind. His simple life was basketball. Children of Vineland wore basketball. He started a program at St. Francis where he taught. Did that for about eight to ten years. Built that program into a winning program. He then co-founded the Vineland Basketball Association, which we now still run thirty years later. It has grown from a four-team league, served four high school teams, to a thirty-five-team league, serving five age brackets. We're very proud of that, and that's all to Frank. It's also two seasons, winter and summer, with over four hundred kids in each season. Frank was a member of the Divine Mercy Church. Tried to have a social life at the North Italy and the Italian-American Club. But Frank's most memorable and proud membership was serving the Vineland Board of Education. He did this for twelve years, while he had the reins for nine and a half as President. I still have his gallo. That thing is kind of beat up. Frank passed away way too quickly in May of two thousand and ten. In his honor, Vineland High has honored him with the Wall and Hall of Fame in two thousand and ten. The city also named the parks, the Pelugi Park, after Frank. This would be the ultimate honor, to name a school after Frank. If I may, I would like to make a suggestion with all these honorable people that are here. Not only should we limit naming the schools if there's possibility of naming different parts of the school after some of these people also, that would also serve as a great honor. Thank you.
Brian Peters.
Good evening. I had the pleasure of addressing this Board and all of you when you took the step to reopen this hearing of the naming of the school. It was a hard decision that night. I know there was a lot of testimony, and you opened yourself up to this. I admire you for that as public servants. And, you know, I hope that you will take the step to pick a name, because I've heard of a lot of honorable names and people that were out tonight. I am here in support of Sergeant Dominic Pilla. Since the hearing of when you were gonna reopen the school, myself and my fellow Assemblyman, Bruce Land, he's here, and Bob Andrewjack, he already spoke, we introduced a resolution in the New Jersey Assembly to name the October 3rd, that day after Sergeant Dominic Pilla and Jamie Smith, who is another fellow Ranger from Long Valley, New Jersey. That resolution passed seventy-nine to zero in the Assembly, and thirty-three to zero in the Senate. Everybody present voted for it. Couple days later, Governor Murphy, on October 3rd, signed that into law, that resolution, and ordered all flags at half-staff and throughout the state of New Jersey. And every year on October 3rd, the state of New Jersey will honor Sergeant Dominic Pilla for the many reasons of which I think were summarized appropriately by Colonel McKnight and his teammate, Mr. Moore. The Battle of Mogadishu, Battle of Black Hawk Down. It was Operation Gothic Serpent. It was Rangers, it was Delta, it was my fellow SEALs. And they went in, and Dominic Pilla sacrificed his life for a fellow Ranger and a brother. And I think it was mentioned before, it's all about the kids. What are they gonna look to, what are they gonna look up? And I think there's a lot of options, but in my mind, as a veteran, to look up and see that selfless sacrifice for your country. You say, when you sign up for the military, you sign a check made payable to the United States government for the amount up to and including your life. Sergeant Dominic Pilla had that check cashed in full. And I think, I can think of no better honor for the students, this high school, to look him up, hear the story, and emulate that sacrifice for their country. Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Frank Pilla.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Frank Pilla, brother to Dominic Pilla, Sergeant Dominic Pilla. I would like to read a letter to you from my Colonel James Martin Akers. Dear Vineland School Board members, I am Army Colonel James Martin Akers, and I am greatly honored to provide my unreserved recommendation for renaming the Vineland Middle School after the late Sergeant Dominic M. Pilla. My father was a community leader and a city mayor for twelve years, and my mother is a retired public middle school teacher of over forty years who still voluntarily tutors at age seventy-nine. Long before seeking graduate degrees, I too graduated from the same public school system that my parents did many years before. As such, I am keenly aware of the profound importance of schools to the local community, with civic leaders, educators, and parents all working toward the common goal of exquisite development of local youth. Your decision regarding the school's name is important. In pondering the decision you've entrusted to make, along with my understanding and deep respect for Vineland's own Sergeant Pilla and his family, my perspective is shaped by my own early academic and social development, in addition to thirty years in the military. Adolescent periods have always been, and will continue to be, critical formative years where young people introspectively consider the deeper meanings of personal and academic growth. Educators promote an environment where young people develop their own value systems and social norms, in addition to the refinement of critical thinking skills. This environment is ideally fostered through patience, acceptance, selflessness, mutual respect, challenge, example, and inspiration. With this type of development environment in mind, Sergeant Pilla's example serves to provide such an inspiration, along with an encouragement to be part of something bigger than oneself, an encouragement to pursue dreams while trying to make our world a better place. Sergeant Pilla swore to defend the people of the United States along with the American ideal of unalienable rights, among which are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. In an apolitical act of selflessness, Sergeant Pilla paid the ultimate sacrifice to preserve the future of others, such as the young people of Vineland, New Jersey. Sergeant Pilla is a national hero, not just a local one. Greater love hath no man than he lay down in his own life for his friends. Because of a loving example Sergeant Pilla set, the future he forfeited and the universal ideals that he stood for, I can think of no better individual or reason than for his name to be memorialized through your school. Best wishes to your community, and thank you for your time and consideration. James Martin Akers, Colonel, Lieutenant Grade, Deputy Commanding Officer.
Mr. Pilla, your time has expired, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Carl Pinto.
I'm very humbled to listen to the stories of all the nominees this evening. I support the name of the school in honor of Sergeant Dominic Pilla. I signed up in the same office as he did. As a Navy veteran of twenty-two years, I believe it would be honorable to name the school after a Vinlander that volunteered to serve and gave the ultimate sacrifice. May all the nominees rest in peace. Thank you.
Tina Crudell-Pontieri.
Good evening. My name is Tina Crudelli-Pontieri, a lifelong friend of the Scherlante family. When I was asked by Judy Scherlante-Talarico to speak on behalf of her father's nomination, I did not even hesitate to say yes, as I wholeheartedly believe that Salvatore Scherlante is most deserving of this honor. But I was a bit stumped on how to concisely convey the many reasons why this school should bear his name, the many ways Mr. Scherlante positively contributed to the lives of his students, his athletes, his family, friends, and community, literally to his very last natural breath. I then read a Vineland Public School Facebook posting about the Lincoln Avenue Middle School's six pillars of character. Trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness... six pillars of character: trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, citizenship. This was Salvatore Schalante. What I had read exemplified exactly what he had contributed to the lives of those students, athletes, his daughters, their friends, and community. This was how Mr. Schalante lived his life, and this is what any of us who were blessed to have had crossed our paths with him took away from our particular relationship with him. Yeah, we may have not realized the total scope of what he was teaching us at the time, but with age, we got it. Naming the Lincoln Avenue Middle School as the Salvatore Schalante Middle School would permanently affix these pillars of character to the school and would allow Mr. Schalante to once again positively touch the lives of students, athletes, teachers, and the community. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Robert Scarpah.
Consider tonight, there are twelve local heroes. They include a former coworker of mine, family friends, former football coach, and a former firefighter who died in the line of duty despite my father's effort on scene to revive him. They are all worthy of consideration. But tonight I rise at the request of the Pilla family to read a letter from Dr. Jeffrey Strucker, who was Sergeant Pilla's commanding officer the day he died for his country. So from Dr. Strucker. I am the president of a board of school in Columbus, Georgia, and therefore, as I begin this request, I know that what I'm asking is significant, and I understand that such a decision should not be made lightly. Knowing that, I am confident that what I'm asking for is worthy of your consideration. I would like to strongly encourage you to redesignate the Landis Avenue Middle School as a Sergeant Dominic Pilla Middle School. I served in the Seventy-Fifth Regiment of the Army with Sergeant Pilla and had the honor of leading him in combat in Mogadishu, Somalia in nineteen ninety-three. I witnessed firsthand the quality of his character and service. If it were not for his courage, I would not be alive today. I know that Sergeant Pilla loved your community and was a loyal and faithful member, and I believe he deserves the recognition for the following two reasons. One, he is already known in Violin as a hero and a man of valor. Having been awarded the prestigious Bronze Star Medal, I recommended him for this award because of his outstanding service. He has featured in the movie Black Hawk Down, which brings further recognition to his name, and having a school named after him would abide in carrying his heroic legacy. And secondly, he is a great moral example for students to learn and to follow. By naming the school Sergeant Dominic Pilla Middle School, students will be inspired to learn about a great leader from their own community and would want to emulate his example of selflessness. This could potentially lead to future generations of leaders and representatives of Violin. Once again, I understand that naming the school after someone is a significant request, and I would not ask you to do so if I did not think it was appropriate. Dominic Pilla was an admirable member of your community, and it was an honor to have known him. Again, if it were not for him making the ultimate sacrifice, I would not be alive today and would not be the leader that I have become. Thank you.
Kathleen Sparanza.
Good evening. My name is Kathleen. I'm a resident in Violin and have two children. My younger one actually goes to Lincoln Avenue School. My son is a student at VHS, and I asked him if he wanted to come with me tonight or wanted to speak in support of renaming Lincoln School after Sergeant Dominic Pilla, and he said, quote, "Mom, you don't think those people already made up their mind on how they're going to vote? It's a waste of time," end quote. Isn't it a shame that a sixteen-year-old already knows the game of politics is played? Well, I'm asking you to take off your political hats tonight and think like a regular parent, think like one of us on this side of that table. My family and I would like for you all to vote to rename Lincoln Avenue School in honor of a great American, Sergeant Dominic Pilla. One more deliberate way to make children aware that there are local heroes among them than to rename a building after one of them. There is a great message to be sent to our youth in this renaming process, and that is that there is something out there larger than yourself worth fighting for. Yes, community heroes like police officers and firefighters are obviously very important to the community and should be respected, but dying selflessly for your country is a sacrifice not many of us can fully comprehend the scope of, let alone understand the toll that it would have on that family and everything they had to endure. You shouldn't vote to rename the school after Sergeant Pilla simply because he was portrayed in the movie. You should not do it for Sister Jen or Brother Frank or for his parents. You should have or do it to teach all of the students that come through the Violin School System who Sergeant Pilla was. He was a hero. We can make students aware that they can be their own kind of hero, that they can be part of something larger than themselves, show them it's possible to be stronger and braver than they ever thought possible. We are at a time in our rapidly changing culture where social justice warriors want to change the definition of the word veteran to include people that never even served in the military. You need to do this before it's too late. The support this family has in this renaming process is far-reaching. People that have moved out of Violin even want this to happen for us, but you all need to want this to happen for us. Please do the right thing tonight. Let's honor our fallen soldier that died for you, for me, for everyone here tonight, and for everyone across America. He sacrificed without reservation or hesitation, and he served his community seven thousand five hundred ninety-three miles from home. Thank you.
Jenna Barufi-Talarico.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jenna Barufi-Talarico. I would like to say a few words regarding the naming of Violin's new middle school in honor of Salvatore C. Schalante. Unfortunately, his grandson, my husband, Justin Talarico, was only six months old when his grandfather's life was tragically cut short on the practice field here at Violin High School. Fortunately, Justin's family kept his spirit and story alive. Also, a bonus for Justin, dating, then marrying, this quote-unquote "bunagirl," was getting to further know his grandfather through the many stories from his childhood, classmates, neighbors, colleagues, football players, and fellow parishioners, my father being one of them. Every memory of this man brought him to life for those of us who were unable to formally meet him. Whether it was from his early years growing up in Landisville to teaching and coaching in Violin, I would like to share some of the amazing qualities of a man so deserving of this school naming honor. Salvatore C. Schalante modeled what a confident, contributing, caring, and conscientious citizen should be. He took nothing for granted. He stood up for his beliefs and for the rights of others. He realized that something was always to be learned from every experience along the way and shared those lessons. He gave a hundred percent in order to be the best that he could be and to live life to the fullest extent. He was a listener and spoke respectfully and made sure your voice was always heard. He was proud, fair, and respected. He treated all equitably. The nineteen ninety yearbook quote that was dedicated to him sums up who Salvatore C. Schalante was as a husband, father, teacher, coach, and mentor, and represents his impact on our community, especially Violin's youth. So I'd like to conclude with this quote. "To laugh often and much, to win the respect of intelligent people and affection of children, to earn the appreciation of honest critics, and endure the betrayal of false friends, to appreciate beauty, to find the best in others, to leave the world a bit better, whether by a healthy child, a garden patch, or a redeemed social condition, to know even one life has breathed easier because you have lived, this is to have succeeded." These words can act as a guide for our community members, especially the youth of Violin. Thank you for the consideration of this nomination.
Jeff Talarico.
Good evening, Board. Good evening, everyone. You know, thank you for the opportunity to nominate Salvatore Schalante for the naming of the new middle school. Salvatore Schalante was an inspiration to many, a man who lived a life of integrity and led by example. He overcame many obstacles in life that would have stopped an ordinary man, but he was not ordinary. He was motivated, goal-oriented, had a strong work ethic, and believed in building a solid foundation of education to propel you forward. He never made excuses and did what he said he would do. You could always count on him in any situation. He was consistent and fair and treated everyone with respect. He looked for the good in everyone and made sure you understood that you mattered and you could be an inspiration to others. Your personal situation could be used to motivate yourself and not to be excuses to hold yourself back. Naming the middle school after Coach Dow would be a fitting tribute to someone we could all relate to. His backstory reads like so many in our country today. He was a son of immigrants, a product of a public school education. He was an ESL student and an athlete. He was drafted into the military but was discharged to go home to care for his mother, younger sister, after the murder of his father, who was a local policeman. He worked many jobs to pay for his education because he knew people were counting on him to succeed. If he stopped short, no one could find fault because of everything he overcame to fulfill his dreams. Each roadblock became a stepping stone to success. He was a friend and mentor to many and inspired students and athletes as a teacher and a coach. He was very patient with his students and players to make sure that they understood the expectations and the accountability you had to yourself and your teammates. Again, naming the school after Salvatore Schalante, my father-in-law, would be a fitting example of overcoming obstacles, to not make excuses, to do the work, and inspiring future generations to succeed. Thank you for your time and consideration of Salvatore Schalante for the naming of the new school. Thank you.
Judith Schalante-Talarico.
Good evening, Board members and audience. I want to thank my family, friends, players, and my former classmates from nineteen seventy-five at Memorial, Pana and Connie, for sharing their memories. Thank you for this opportunity to share and talk about my father, Salvatore Schalante. He took his last natural breath on the coaching field at Violin High School South, this very campus, on October, it was October third, nineteen eighty-nine, during football practice. He remained in a coma for a week, and he died October tenth. I saw the huddle around my father that day. I had my two young boys with me, one twenty-two months and the other was six months, both dressed in football outfits. We were going to watch the practice at pop-ups' request. He loved coaching and teaching the youth of Violin, and he died doing what he loved. He taught and mentored many of his students, student athletes, former students, and new coaches, as well as many of Violin's finest past and present teachers, administrators, counselors, and coaches. His influence as a true leader still affects the students he had first educated. He taught lessons to last a lifetime. He taught life. He made everyone feel special, unique, and worthwhile of greatness. He made you realize that you were important. He was a humble and ordinary man while being extraordinary in life. His smile was infectious and a universal language that all understood. This fine gentleman could relate then and now to the people of our community, our state, country, and world. He knew how to communicate well, be a listener, and demonstrate leadership qualities at such a young age. He was selfless and self-motivated because he took the adversities in his life and turned them into something positive to be shared. He was rewarded intrinsically, never seeking credit for his actions. My mother's sister, our families, and I believe that he deserves the recognition of having his name on the new middle school, representing all that is positive, a place to learn and grow, and be a place of accomplishment and success for all who pass through its doors and classrooms. It is a very appropriate pairing of his name and this particular school because of its location, it's a green school, and it's the grade levels that he taught. His name on this specific school would exemplify a combination of his true passions for education and giving back to the community. He embodied a role model to many of his students while he taught, and he would also be a role model for today's students as well because of his resiliency in overcoming struggles in his, excuse me, in his own life that many students can relate to. He was a child of immigrant parents, had to learn English in school, lost his father to gun violence, but overcame these hardships through hard work and honesty. He would show today's children how to succeed in becoming a true, kind, sincere, and educated role model for all. We appreciate your consideration of this nomination. We could not be more proud of all that Salvatore C. Schalante accomplished and represented in his lifetime. Thank you.
Justin Talarico.
Good evening. On behalf of my siblings and I, we appreciate the opportunity to share the reasons why we believe our grandfather, Salvatore C. Schalante, truly represents a much-needed role model for our community's children today. By naming this new middle school after him, his students could look to his example and delight in their lives. Even though he was born in the nineteen thirties, much of his life story sounds like many stories we hear about today. You've heard before, he overcame many hardships such as learning English in school, having to teach it to his younger sister and parents, who were immigrants to the U.S. Being drafted into the U.S. Army in the nineteen fifties and then granted an honorable discharge to care for his mother and young sister when his forty-nine-year-old father, a policeman, was fatally shot in his own yard. His faith carried him through these tough times, and he remained an active member in the church. He never gave up and remained positive, even when there was so much in his life to hold him back. He worked to pay for his car so he could travel to and from Glassboro State College, which he paid for too. When he didn't have a vehicle, he walked to the college from his home just a few miles from here. That is how dedicated he was to education and education in general. He valued it. It couldn't be taken away. He earned his bachelor's and first and second master's degrees there. He was going on for his doctorate. He had goals. He taught, coached, and sold encyclopedias while attaining his graduate degrees and managed to keep up his great work ethic. He was always a positive role model to all who met him. Students and players responded in a positive way as he guided them on a meaningful path in their life's journey because he was so sincere. You knew and could sense how much he truly cared. He built self-esteem and a positive mindset for a love of lifelong learning. He helped and encouraged others to build life skills and resiliency, to those with walls up, and taught them to work through these curveballs using coping, writing, as well as cooking skills. He overcame many adversities and showed others how to overcome hard situations. He told those in need of guidance to just believe in yourself and your abilities. He always thought of others and gave back to the community whenever possible. He worked at the Youth Center, Manpower Development, helped at PAL, helped with the Boy Scouts, as well as the Midget Leagues. He cared about the people of the community, therefore, starting up the emergency management program in our area. His leadership qualities were unbounded at home, school, and in the Violin and surrounding communities. These qualities came through as he headed the Science Department. He taught at both Veterans Memorial and DePaul City Middle Schools, where he was a mentor to many. In conclusion, he was an inspiration to many in his life. He was dedicated to helping and educating people of all ages. He had values and goals. He was a gentleman and leader in our community, setting positive examples and helping others to do the same. to do the same. All who knew him admired him. Thank you very much for your consideration, and thank you for all that you do.
Joe Testa.
Good evening. My name is Joe Testa. I'm a citizen and a resident of Vineland and a very proud veteran. In all of the Rangers that have showed up tonight, and I appreciate their support on behalf of Dominic Pillar. Dominic Pillar is a hero. He is my hero. With less than three minutes that I have remaining, and I just used up a minute, I'm sure, what do I say, what do I do to convince you to select Sergeant Dominic Pillar's name for this school? You read our packet, you have seen our videos, our endorsements, and you heard our previous presentations. So let me please say that if you really want to motivate children in our community to live by a code that will influence their lives forever, then honor Sergeant Dominic Pillar and choose his name. Sergeant Pillar took an oath, that we all do as a soldier, and then he took another oath as a member of the elite Army Rangers. He lived by those. He lived by those oaths, he lived by that code. He exemplified a man that lived by duty, honor, country, and loyalty. What more can I say about a person, and what more can you do to influence our young children but to set that example by placing his name on that school? Dominic Pillar qualifies for this honor because he gave back to this community and at a very young age, in his short life, as a man of honor, loyalty, and patriotism. He made the ultimate sacrifice so that we could continue to live our lives with the freedoms he died for. He died, and that death is a reminder that we never, never leave our fallen behind. Sergeant Pillar and Black Hawk Down should be a memorial to this code. Rangers lead the way, and let's follow that motto as did Sergeant Pillar, and let's lead the way for our community, our families, and especially our children. By honoring Sergeant Pillar, we honor all and we will never forget. In closing, I just want to say that, as I said earlier, that Dominic Pillar is a hero, and he should be an inspiration and will be an inspiration to our children. May God bless America, and may God bless Dominic Pillar.
Amanda Triunfo.
Okay, hi, I'm here to share a couple nominations for Salvatore Tralante. Good evening, board members. My name is Peter Schifolaleo, and I was a teacher in Millville School District for over 35 years. I feel that I became an educator because of having Mr. Tralante as my middle school teacher. He instilled my love for learning that still burns inside of me today. He was a role model for first and second-generation Italian-American students. He showed us if we worked hard, we could achieve anything. He was a thoughtful teacher who cared more about the student than the academics. Because of his influence on me and many of my friends, we went on to two successful careers. He passed away doing what he loved, coaching, and naming the school after him would be a well-deserved honor. This one is written on behalf of Sal's sister. Dear board members, Sal Tralante was, I'm sorry, was born to immigrant parents. He grew up in hard times. While in high school, he worked part-time at a gas station. He bought his own first car, and he also paid towards his college education. Sal was always involved in sport activities. He played football in high school and college. He also did some semi-pro boxing. Because of his interest in football, he coached JV Boys and then also at Vineland High School. Sal always took an interest in helping and inspiring disadvantaged students. He was very dedicated to his profession. He taught science at Memorial and DePaula Middle Schools. He was well-liked by his students and staff. Sal is very deserving of the honor of having a school or a section of the school named after him. His family would greatly appreciate, would greatly appreciate the board's consideration in this matter. Sincerely, Anne Marie Tralante Santilli. Thank you.
I don't have any more yellow sheets. I don't know if anyone came in late and wanted to speak. Is there anyone else?
Good evening. My, my name is Barbara Wainwright. I'm here to speak on behalf of Sal Tralante. I'm a teacher in the, in the district as of now. When I was a new teacher and I first started settling into a new job at a new school, it was an exciting but yet a frightening experience. Luckily, I met Sal on my first few days of school, and he made working at DePaula Middle School a pleasure. He was always upbeat and positive. I can still remember his happy whistling as he strolled down the hallways. I grew accustomed to listening for that whistling when I came to school early and I worked late. It made me feel at home. Mr. Tralante was always a positive role model, not only to his students but also to his colleagues. His love of teaching was evident in his daily interactions with his students. Sal was a simple man, an excellent teacher, and a wonderful father, and he made an impact on so many lives.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Seeing that no one else has offered to speak, we will close public comment at this time. Mr. DeSanto, will you please summarize the selection procedure?
Yes. Each board member will be given a ballot with his or her name on it. The ballot will list the candidates in alphabetical order. Each board member will be requested to check off up to three candidates that he/she proposes as finalists. In other words, you may nominate one, two, or three finalists. Those ballots will become part of the minutes of this meeting. The ballots will be tabulated by Mr. Mustarel, the Assistant Business Administrator. Mr. Mustarel will certify a written report to the board, listing in alphabetical order up to three finalists receiving preliminary votes. That written report also will become part of the minutes of this meeting. The president will then entertain a motion to name the school in honor of one of the finalists. If the motion is seconded, a roll-call vote will be taken. If the nominee receives a majority vote of the quorum, which tonight you have eight members, so five votes are needed to select the winner, the school will be named after that individual. If not, then a motion may be made for another candidate. If none of the finalists obtains a majority vote on any motion, then the name of the school remains Lincoln Avenue Middle School. Yeah. Mr. Fiocchi's grandfather is one of the nominees. He will abstain from participating in the preliminary selection of three finalists. In the event his father, his grandfather becomes one of the three finalists, he will likewise need to abstain from that vote. However, if his grandfather is no longer in the running, then he is free to select and vote on one of the three finalists.
Thank you, Mrs..
I'm going to hand out the ballots now.
For the record, in addition to the individuals named, there was a nomination to keep the school, the Lincoln Avenue Middle School, and a nomination to name the school, Lincoln Avenue Middle School, dedicated to outstanding citizens of Vineland. Our policy is directed to individuals, so these names will not be considered as part of this process. In the event no one is elected, as I mentioned, the school's name will remain the same.
Mr. DeSanto, do I just go around and pick them up and then give them to Scott at this point? Or do you want to pick them up? For the ballots, do I collect them, or do you want to collect them? Mr. Mustarel, there should be eight there. There should be eight ballots.
I'm sorry.
Seven ballots, seven ballots. Mr. Fiocchi could not vote. Seven.
Mr. Mustarel has certified the finalists, and I'll give this to Mrs. Haley to be read into the record.
Mr. DeSanto, do I now read this off?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. This is our finalist list, and it reads, "I have certified, I'm sorry, I have reviewed and tabulated the individual ballots completed by each board member and certify that the following individuals received the most votes as finalists. Salvatore C. Tralante, Miles Lerman, and Sergeant Dominic Pillar." And it's certified by Scott A. Mustarel, Assistant Business Administrator.
At this time, we will entertain a motion to name the school in honor of one of the finalists.
President Boardley, I make a motion to rename Lincoln Avenue Middle School after Miles Lerman.
Do we have a second on that motion?
I'd also like to make a motion.
We have a motion on the floor. We need to see, any second on that motion?
Did he get a second on the motion?
We'll now entertain a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Mr. Fiocchi. Roll call, Mrs. Haley.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Medio?
No.
Mr. Sabrana?
No.
Ms. Finelli?
No.
Mr. Ulrich?
No.
Ms. Acosta?
No.
Mr. Boardley?
Yes.
Motion does not carry. There's three yeses, and, and five noes.
This time, we'll open back up for a motion.
I would like to make a motion for Sergeant Dominic Pillar.
Second.
Roll call, Mrs. Haley.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
No.
Mr. Jennings? I'm sorry, I should cross them off, sorry. Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Ms. Finelli?
Yes.
Mr. Ulrich?
Yes.
Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Mr. Boardley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Folks, we just have to, board member comments, and then we can adjourn for the evening. Congratulations to the Pillar family, and congratulations to all the nominees tonight. We really appreciate sitting up here, listening to all the stories of your loved ones, and we have the utmost respect for each and every one of the nominees this evening. Mr. Fiocchi, we'll start with you. Any comments?
Just like to congratulate the Pillar family and as well as all the other nominees tonight. Thank you.
Folks, if you can please hold your applause, please. Mr. Holmes?
I'd like to thank everyone for speaking tonight and congratulate the Pillar family on this momentous occasion.
Mr. Ulrich?
I would also like to thank everybody that showed the courage to come up to support their loved ones. I knew several of the nominees throughout my years, living in the city of Vineland most of my life. So it, it was a tough decision in one respect, but an easy, easy decision in the other that there were no bad choices. So congratulations to the Pillar family. It's my honor as a law enforcement officer to support a military member.
Ms. Finelli?
I also would like to thank the, for everyone for coming out tonight, and also congratulations to the Pillar family, and I look forward to seeing the new sign-up.
Mr. Medio?
I'd like to thank everyone who came out tonight and spoke.
Mr. Sabrana?
There were truly some inspiring stories here tonight, and all of these
There were truly some inspiring stories here tonight, and all of these candidates were heroes in my book. Congratulations to the Pillo family, and I also want to say I'm very grateful to the people who've reached out to me, either in person, via social media, phone calls and texts, over the last couple of weeks. We were elected to serve, we were elected to make decisions, and we've done that, and I think we've all done that with a good heart. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Acosta?
Again, I'm going to echo what my fellow board members have said. I can tell you that it truly was inspiring to me to be able to learn more about all of the heroes that were spoken of tonight. I truly am, I do feel so inspired that so many people in our community have given so selflessly, not only as teachers, educators, firefighters, businessmen, it just goes on and on. To the Pillo family, I just want to say that the story of Dom, I think that what will be most important for, particularly for middle school students, is, and I know because my daughter is in seventh grade, and I really thought about the quality and traits that Dominic portrayed throughout his short life, that it didn't really matter how short his life was. He lived it to the fullest. He had a dream, and he fulfilled that dream. He had commitment not only to his family, his community, but to the country and to the world. No matter what he did, he did to the best of his abilities. I know that some comments were said he was just a regular boy from a regular family. Well, I think we all start off being just ordinary children that are born in the city, and it's up to us, and I think that we have the ability to be able to, through perseverance, through hard work, through bravery, and love for your country and love for one another, you can really change the world. And I think that Dominic is going to be someone that our children will look up to for a very long time. So, thank you very much, and again, for all the families. I mean, every single person nominated is deserving of the recognition, and I really thank you. I wish we had more buildings to name, but thank you so much for sharing your family's stories and making them part of our own families. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Acosta. Dr. Grucciato?
I'd like to congratulate the Pillo family. I know this has consumed your life for the past several months, so I truly hope it brings you the joy that you're wishing for. In regard to the other people who spoke tonight, obviously, they were all phenomenal candidates. And I only can say this to you. I hope that you walk away with your head held high, because putting a name on a building does not keep your loved one's memory alive. It's you, it's the stories you tell to your children, to your grandchildren, the respect you show one another. That's how a name lives on, not necessarily by being placed on a building. So hold your head high, because there's not one person here tonight that was not deserving of this. I'm proud of all of you. My heart hurts for your stories. I know what it is to lose to a loved one, especially at a young age, and I just wish you the very best. I thank you for taking the time. Some of you flew in to be here tonight, and I know that your stories are very personal to you. So I thank you for that, and remember that your loved one is not forgotten. You can keep their memory alive. God bless you all.
Thank you, Dr. Grucciato. As I said, thank you to everyone who came out to speak. It's truly inspirational to hear a lot of the stories, pretty much all of the stories, from what each of the candidates did for this community and the country. So congratulations to all of you, and hopefully there's something down the road that we can do to continue to honor some of the ones that didn't get their name on the building. So again, congratulations to the Pillo family. It's going to be a great story to tell all the children. I know the kids at Lincoln Avenue Middle School are very eager to come up with a mascot, so. I suggested that one, but I don't think that's it. So again, thank you to everyone, and motion for adjournment.
Excuse me, Mr. Boardley. Before we adjourn, I'd like to volunteer to be involved in the ceremonies to name the school as far as inviting dignitaries, et cetera.
Say it again?
Eugene, we can't hear you.
We're going to have a ceremony to name the new school, and I'd like to be involved in that. I'd like to be involved as far as inviting some dignitaries in the country and setting that ceremony up.
Okay. To my understanding, the central administration does that, but you're more than welcome to help out with that in any way possible. Motion to adjourn?
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.